Call meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Blunier.
Here.
Hilliard.
Here.
Leach.
Here.
Mendel.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Harris is absent and we have a call.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no public hearings, presentations, or special reports. Any public comment?
Good evening, Mayor, trustees, and staff. Leanne Brown with the Morton Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Council. April has arrived, so we've got a busy month. Couple of things to highlight again. April 20th, Wednesday, April 20th, is our Forecast Breakfast out at the Comfort Inn and Suites. We'll have all of our taxing bodies share an update of what they've been working on, vision for the upcoming year, and just a great way for our community to come together and businesses to be back in person and learn more about what's happening in our various entities. And I was just talking with our U-Haul friends about the pancake breakfast. You will also get a special early festival treat in pumpkin pancakes at the Forecast Breakfast. So TCRC provides the breakfast at festival and they do our pumpkin pancakes for the Forecast Breakfast. Attendance numbers are increasing, so still room for attendance. So get signed up. And then a few days after that, our community cleanup. We take a lot of pride in this community and we're excited to be hosting our community cleanup on Earth Day on Friday, April 22nd. Businesses and citizens are all encouraged, whether that's stepping outside your front lawn, your road, your sidewalk, the front of your business, or selected community cleanup areas, especially the interstate corridors. We'd love to have all involved and help clean up our community and celebrate Earth Day. And then also later that day will be the kickoff of our Fourth Fridays. So our Fourth Friday season runs from April through August on the Fourth Friday throughout downtown and a couple other businesses are involved. So more to come on that, but information's being released and save the date for the opening of our Fourth Friday season on April 22nd as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Like all the citizens of Morton who know, we're welcoming you all to Morton, Illinois. And tonight we have some gentlemen from U-Haul and we'll have them come up. We have some pictures here of what the new facility is going to look like. So Aaron, if you could come up.
Sure.
Aaron Freeman.
Hi. I'd like to say we're really excited about introducing interior climate-controlled storage to the Morton residents and proud to say that this is going to be the first ADA-accessible storage in Morton area. So we'll offer interior climate-controlled storage in addition to covered storage. So when you pull in to unload the contents, all of your trucks and cars, the vehicles, will be parked inside.
Thank you.
Thanks.
On this facility, you can see the picture here. These are the overhead doors that they can be backed in and unload. And there's going to be a landscaped island out in front, some truck storage in the front, but there'll be no outside storage. So all the storage will be inside the building, landscaped and new signage. And the Morton citizens can see that they're going to have a sign with the Morton logo on the expressway and then also on the entrance here. So it would be a little team players and they've been fine gentlemen to work with throughout this entire process. Been talking to Dan Malouf probably for two or three years on getting U-Haul here and other facilities. And it's really been a privilege to work with all of you. So welcome to Morton and thanks for coming here tonight.
That's great. Thank you.
So in that, I'd ask for a motion to approve that. That's under Brad.
So moved. Second.
And Ben, Your Honor, I have a request to add an addendum to the special use. Last week, I think on Tuesday, there was a walk-around the exterior of the old Kmart building. And at the end of that, there were a number of items that were discussed with U-Haul. And I'll read those off, but I'll make a motion that we approve the addendum. I've given each of the trustees a list of those items to look at, but I'll motion that we approve the addendum and then I'll read them off.
Second.
Okay, so first item is there will be a cantilevered canopy installed for the return vehicle lanes in the parking lot. We've asked the two posts for that cantilevered canopy be installed in the westward landscaped island. If you look at the print, schematic print of the parking lot, you'll notice that there's two landscaped islands. They run north and south. And I'm talking about the one on the left or the west. Also, we requested they put water spigots be installed in the exterior of the building to facilitate the watering of the newly-installed landscaping. And I didn't know, were you guys going to? I don't know if you have a hose when people have to clean off the vehicles. Do you, will you put a spigot out by that return vehicle area?
I don't think it'll be.
It's fine. I just wondered, just being nosy. And then the former pharmacy window, if you remember, there was a pharmacy pickup window installed there when it was Kmart. We asked that that either be covered by the false metal doors or removed and blocked up. There's fencing, if you remember, in the old yard and garden area, there's fencing on that southwest corner of the building. We've asked that that be removed and the fence post holes be filled in. We've asked that all overhead doors will be replaced or blocked up if they're removed. We also asked that the existing canopy at the rear of the building is to be stripped of paint and then repainted. And next, the parking lot area that's directly in front of the building will be patched, fog-coated, and striped. Also, the striping will identify the return lanes for all vehicles being returned after use. And then lastly, all exterior walk-through steel doors and their frames will either be replaced or removed and filled in. This includes the large steel frame windows and door combination that's on the west side of the building, just north of the old yard and garden area. The front doors are aluminum and they don't need to be replaced. So those doors that don't rust, we're not asking for those to be replaced. If they want to, they can do whatever they want. But we're asking that all the steel doors and frames be replaced. So that's the list of the amendments.
Thank you, Steve.
We did the walk-around with all the U-Haul gentlemen last Tuesday.
And these do not come as a surprise to them because they were all discussed with them during that walk-around, just so that you're aware of that. And then we need to vote on the amendment first?
Correct. Any trustees have any comments on that? We'll call the roll then. We're voting for the amendment first.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We'll ask for approval of the motion to approve.
Special use.
Okay. Blunier.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen. Been a long time coming. Okay, well, that's a nice addition. That had been sitting a few years empty. They're going to spend over a million dollars on that building. So it should be a great addition to the village. The consent agenda tonight is approval of the minutes, the regular meeting, March 21st, 2022, and the closed session, minutes of March 21st of 2022, and the approval of the bills. If we could have a motion.
Move. Second.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Leach.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I have nothing tonight. Village clerk?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Village administrator?
I have a couple items tonight, Your Honor. First of which is ordinance 22-18 and ordinance making amendments regarding the charge for gas usage service charge to Section 8-2-15 of the Morton Municipal Code.
We could have a motion.
Second.
Would you like to explain that?
Basically, the current code is unclear. Language is lacking. So it's been interpreted that when gas services shut off for non-payment, that we do not charge a service charge. And what seems to be happening is some of the commercial businesses have figured out that it comes spring, they just quit paying their utility bill, let it go until fall when it gets cold enough that they need the heat back on. And then they turn it, come in and pay everything and get it turned back on. And in the meantime, they're not paying between $11 and $20 a month, depending on the size of their meter, of the service charge. We do charge them a reconnection fee of $50, but that $50 is a lot cheaper than, say, six months of service charge. So those businesses that have always paid and will not have this issue, it just seemed unfair to the rest of us when we got to looking at it, that just by not paying your bill and waiting however many months that it is until it gets cold enough, then it is a financial advantage to them to do so. So we are asking that we can continue to charge the service charge like we would any other time. And then that would be an additional charge that they would owe once they come in to pay their bill and get their service reconnected.
Any questions?
Sure. Julie, do we charge to turn off the gas?
We're not allowed by law to charge. The only time we do charge is if you voluntarily ask to have your service disconnected, like if you're, say, you're selling your home and you actually physically want your gas or water turned off. We do charge a disconnection fee at that point. But by law, you're not allowed to charge a disconnection fee for non-payment. You're only charged a reconnection fee once they make the bill good.
So I just want to make sure I understand what you just said. So these customers are choosing to have their gas turned off? And then the only expense they would, we would have thought they would have had would have been the monthly service charge for the meter that they have there. So we're not allowed to charge a disconnect fee if they ask us to turn the gas off?
If they request it to be turned off, we can. But if we're turning it off for non-payment, we cannot.
Okay, so and that's what they're doing? They're just not paying?
Right. So they'll go, say, January, the last point they pay.
So, right. Because as I thought about it, the $50 reconnection fee just strikes me as rather cheap, considering what a normal, you know, plumber or electrician would charge to send out a man and a truck with equipment. I'm sure it's more than $50. So should we also then look at that fee? Are we allowed to charge more than $50?
I assume we are. Pat, I'm.
I'd have to look into it based on the regulations specific to our gas utility.
Because going along with it, I think we should also then increase that fee myself because of just the fact that we have a man, a truck, and tools that we're sending out. So.
Part of the process is they also have to go in and light every pilot light when they turn them back on. So it's not like you just go out to the curb and flip a switch and call it a day. They do go into the home and turn everything back on and relight the pilot.
So could you work with Craig and determine?
Yeah, we'll look at that.
And maybe come back with, if you think it should be different?
The only hesitation I have is a lot of people, like on the residential, maybe we could make it two-tier.
Yeah.
Because on a residential, it's amazing how much harder it is for them to come up with because we won't turn anything back on until the full amount is paid.
Right.
So that extra $50 sometimes is that much more difficult for them to come up with.
Right. Okay, thanks.
So. Go ahead. No, go ahead. So are these patrons continuing? Do you use a little bit of gas through the summer?
No, it's turned off due to non-payment.
Okay, so then how many, roughly, how many customers would this be? Is it?
Right now, we only have three or four.
Okay.
That do it, but it's routine.
I understand.
Can I follow up? So are those customers we don't provide water and sewer service to?
These are customers, yeah, we also provide. If we can turn off water, generally, we will turn off water first because people seem to notice that more.
But they're non-payment. So surely, they're not paying the water and sewer also?
Right, no, they're not paying anything.
So they'll just sit there without?
Well, if we turn off the water, usually they're.
If we turn off the water, that will get them to pay the entire bill.
But some of these are like locations, say, Field Shopping Center. Many of those share a water meter, so we can't turn the water off. But if, you know.
Okay, no, we're working on those.
Yeah. They're our location.
Thank you, Ken. Any other questions? Call the roll.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the other item I have tonight, Your Honor, is just a brief discussion on the budget for fiscal year 2023. Provided just some summary pages. And I just want to go over a couple of items. I'm not going to go line by line through the whole thing. If you look at what would be page three, if I would have printed the page numbers on it, it's a budget summary. It's not the colored page. It's the one before that. I just want to go over, that shows we're budgeting a deficit budget of $7.1 million. But I want to point out that as of that, $8.3 million is for the new gas building and the remainder of the project at the water treatment plant. So had we, without those two large expenses that will become assets when they're built, we would have had a $1.2 million surplus out of this budget. And this page shows the projected estimated funds at the end of the year will be a total of $27.3 million. And then on the next multicolored page, I just wanted to go over, the purple section reflects the total capital expenditures for the year, coming in at $17.9 million. The pages following that give detail for all of you as to individual items by department or by fund of what those capital numbers are. My anticipated approval of this would be at the next meeting, but I just wanted to go over the highlights of it so that you have time between now and then to get with me with any questions that you have. Or Craig, if you've got questions on the Public Works budget or if you have questions tonight.
Any questions?
That's it for me tonight.
All right. Thank you. Chief of Police.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Corporation Counsel.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Bet you're doing better keeping up with this. Director of Fire and Emergency.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Okay, Director of Public Works.
Yeah, I have several items tonight. Julie set the stage for some Public Works expenditures, so I have a few expenditures that I'd like to ask for approval. First, item A, I'd like to ask for acceptance of the following bids, which will be part of the 2022 Street Overlay Program. I'd like to read these three items off, and I think they all go together. A, from General Funds for Mill and Overlay in the amount of $1,675,869.04 and award of contract for same to R.A. Collin and Sons Incorporated. Item B, from MFT Funds for Seal Coating in the amount of $95,840.01 and award of contract for same to Porter Brothers. And item C, from MFT Funds for Fog Coating in the amount of $44,450.41 and award of contract for same to R.A. Collin and Sons Incorporated.
If we could have a motion.
So move. Second.
Any comments, Craig? You want to say anything before then?
I mean, this is one of the larger mill and overlays kind of throughout the town. I would like to add, I think I've sent you guys information on those streets. We should be getting started here real soon. We've got to get the next items of miscellaneous concrete, so that's all in front of the overlay. So we're hoping to get started by mid-July on this. I would like to add too, I'll send you guys a link. Andrew and GIS has put together a very nice interactive GIS map that we want to get out there for the public too, so you'll be able to go in and look at streets, cost, contractor. So we're trying to really improve that side of things too, and that should be out tomorrow to view that publicly. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any specific questions on those projects.
Any questions? If not, call the roll.
Newman.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is item B, and this kind of goes in line with the overlay as this work will go in front of it. I'd like to ask for acceptance of bid for the 2022 Miscellaneous Concrete Repairs Project in the amount of $1,258,790.35 and award of contract for same to Autobomb Company Incorporated.
Could I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Yeah, these are similar streets. This information will be out there too publicly through our website to view the streets. And actually, we've allocated, you can see how much dollars are going towards each street also. Unfortunately, on this one, we had a single bidder, Autobomb. We had a lot of interest. These are things we'll look at long-term. I think this price was good. It's a little concerning that we only got one bid. I think that lines up with two things. On the good side, I think, you know, work is good out there. Contractors are very busy. But this is also a very tight contract. So those are things I just want to at least throw out there. We're fortunate that Autobomb did bid and gave us a pretty good competitive price on that.
Yeah, I would like it. I am a little concerned that we're only seeing one bid here. I think last year, well, we only saw two.
Yeah.
I think for miscellaneous concrete, I don't know whether that speaks to maybe the way this package is put together.
Yep.
And something that I think we need to maybe consider if we can do something a little differently.
And we're in constant contact with all the concrete contractors. I'd name them all off, but I'd probably slight one of them right now. But we're in contact with them and those are things that I work actively on the side, trying to figure out why, why you didn't bid our work. And, you know, we get a lot of good feedback on that. But I know a lot of contractors are busy, but there is a tight timeframe with this one. I think those are the two things that kind of align here. So we'll be working on that for next year. And I can promise you, we'll have more than one bidder next year.
The, what were there, five others, I think, listed here? I assume they all took plans out?
Yep, yep. And they were, we did have a pre-bid meeting and I think at least three of them were at the pre-bid meeting too. So we anticipate, I mean, the good thing is we anticipated more bidders at the bid opening, and I think Autobomb probably did also. That's always a good, a good thing. Even if they don't show up, they keep things tight. But we anticipated more to show up and bid. But I'd be glad to talk with you if you had any questions going forward on feedback I get from them.
Well, I know last year, I think I heard some comments, the way that was put together was some deep storm sewer work, I think.
Yep.
And that I think scared the concrete contractors off. I didn't see any of that kind of pipe work in this year's.
Yeah, there's not as much in there. There is a lot of work here all over the place. So, I mean, they do have to work once they start. There's no time to spare. They need to work hard to get it done before the overlay contract.
Yeah.
And I've been working hard. I think other communities have followed suit too. I mean, on the asphalt side, we have nothing bad to say about R.A. Collin or, you know, Tazewell County, but we get single bidders on that. So that's why we break this up, to be more competitive on the concrete. So we definitely want to see that going forward. Asphalt's a little tougher.
Yeah, it's another game.
Yes.
And Autobomb and Sons did a nice job last year.
Yeah, no, nothing against Autobomb.
They did a very nice job down there.
Be nice to see a little more bidding competition.
Yes.
All right, any other questions? Not, call the roll.
Blunier.
Yes.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, item C, I'd like to ask for acceptance of proposal from Xylem Dewatering Solutions Incorporated out of McCain, Illinois, for a new six-inch Godwin pump for the wastewater department in the amount of $47,721.92.
Could I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
This is something that's been budgeted and we're in dire need of this. We had a four-inch one before, but it's been down. So the, you know, obviously, we use this for a number of things, but the biggest thing is doing work at the wastewater plant, be able to bypass pump to do things. So unfortunately, prices are up even on this type of work with inflation and everything else, but we have no time to spare to wait on this piece of equipment. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Not, call the roll.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is item D, acceptance of proposal through Sourcewell and from Altorfer Incorporated for a 2022 Cat 420XE backhoe loader in the amount of $69,000.01. This includes a trade-in of our 2018 John Deere backhoe and it also includes a five-year, 2,000-hour guaranteed buyback price for $75,000.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, this is one of our, this is one of our backhoes Yeah, this, this is one of our, this is one of our backhoes that was coming up on the buyback. So this is a little different. We did not exercise the buyback from John Deere. So we own it. I've been working with Altorfer and they, they finally got us what I felt was an acceptable trade on our existing backhoe of 71,000, which pretty much matched John Deere's. Now, price is up on backhoes too, just like every other piece of equipment. But I think now's the time to, to trade this one in.
What was the buyback on the Deere?
It was 71,000.
71,000.
And in there, I think it's in the paperwork that was in here too, CAT or Altorfer gave 71,000. I think last year it was 60, and I kind of just held out till they could get close to the 71.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. I'm glad to see that you're continuing to use Sourcewell, the government contract manager, to guarantee you got the best price you can get anywhere. So that's it.
Thank you.
So how does the hours play out for five years? You put 2,000 hours on in five years?
Yeah, we come, we come fairly close, but we'll, we'll be under the 2,000. I mean, we've had some before that are 15, and that's a little tight. So 2,000 should be good. Obviously, those are things we work hard to keep an eye on, especially year four and five, and communicating with Altorfer as we go. Usually, they're pretty friendly to us too. Not that we want to bank on going over, but, you know, we're, we're very fortunate to get a new machine, but they're very fortunate to get a very nicely taken care of machine too that they can go sell. But I think those hours are good to answer your question.
If there are more questions, call the roll.
Mendel?
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Blunier?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And lastly, item E, I'd like to ask for acceptance of proposal through Sourcewell and from Cross Implement Incorporated from Mineer for a 2022 John Deere Gator in the amount of $23,816.18.
Could I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Yeah, another, you know, our, our existing Gator, which is about 10 years old, went down. We did buy a motor for it, but we do use that on the street side. But this is a critical piece on the wastewater side that we use on the trunk line clearing. We put the, the camera setup on there, the push camera, the TV, the trunk line. So that's the main use for this, but wastewater does share it when needs arise in other departments.
Is this fully funded out of wastewater?
This one is fully funded out of wastewater, yes.
And what are you going to do with the old one?
The old one, basically, the street department will use that and mowing, weed spraying. It's been pretty handy in that department. Obviously, when that one dies, I think we're done with it. But we'll ride that one as long as we can in the street department, mainly for those uses.
I guess, I'm not sure if I remember, it's been maybe about a year, but I think the police department would like to have one of our used ones.
And we obviously share with them and work very handy with them. So our, both of these are available to them when needed, even the, even the one in wastewater.
It's pretty well-loved, though, the old one.
Oh, yeah.
Well, no, I was just going to say that maybe as you look to the future between the two.
Yeah.
That we could give the police department one that's not quite as beat up as the one you have.
Yeah. And we'll work very handy with him going forward.
He'll even pay part of it out of his budget.
I'm not sure he said that. I don't remember that.
We have not asked for that. We'll work on that, Mayor, if we need to.
All right, any other questions? Call the roll.
Blunier?
Yes.
Mendel?
Yes.
Leach?